For good reasons why not, I should, I say we called a meeting this, uh, what is this? June 16th, 2020 meeting of the Nederland. Miranda, if you would please call the roll.
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
Here.
Trustee Apt.
Here.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer.
Here.
Trustee Danforth.
Present.
Trustee Corvillan.
Here.
Very good. Full house again tonight. Uh, we have three items on the consent agenda. Um, warrants, the minutes and reappointments to the BZA of Deb Davenport and Tom Mahwalt. Uh, anyone have any questions or comments?
You do have Tom on, and I'm not sure if Debbie called in, but you at least have Tom if you have questions.
We're good. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board, or do we have a motion to approve?
This is Allen motion to approve.
Taylor, second.
We have a motion and a second?
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Yes.
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Trustee Corvillan.
Uh, yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
So the agenda passes, and, uh, Tom and Deb, thank you for stepping up and volunteering for the town again.
Thank you, Board.
Looking forward into public comment on non-agenda items, I actually am gonna, I wanna talk about one thing real quickly here because it was brought up by, um, and I think she's on here this evening, Jessa, Jessie on story, at our previous meeting, and it highlighted one of those, um, logical fallacies that we face is that, uh, since I got involved in the town 15 years ago, our board, town board at Public Comment has always opened with the people being asked to state their name and their address. And it was one of those things I just never questioned before. And, uh, in the time since then, I've, uh, looking, been looking, trying to assume, I'd always assumed there was a reason for it, but it just appears that that is simply the way our town has always done it, and it's written in our town, our board procedures to ask that of people. But, uh, Jessie did raise some very good points, so, um, I'd like to bring forward to this board in the future, and, uh, we could even start tonight with the public comment is, uh, sort of ending tradition and instead replacing it with, uh, a simply, you know, allowing anyone who comes to speak to the, before the board to state whether they're a town resident or not. They wanna add with their, whether a resident of Boulder, you know, Boulder County or Gilpin County, fine, but reduce that load. I mean, I can see why it was there in the first place, but I think there's some good reasons not to have it. Um, so I just wanted to publicly thank Jessie for having brought that to my attention because it was one of those things I'd just never even given any thought to because that was the way the town had always seemed to do things. So, thank you, Jessie. Anyone else who likes non-agenda items? So if there's any member of the public who would like to speak, please, uh, speak up. Uh, there we go. Laura, are you raising your hand?
Thank you. I would like to speak. I'm sorry I was out of order in the last meeting. I, I misunderstood that you were, uh, only speaking to, um, BOT members. I wanted to mention that there has been some confusion on the usage fees in that, um, what we get from the town as citizens is that it really isn't based on a second usage, actual usage. It's based on having a second kitchen and that the, the way to get rid of the fee is to demolish that part of your house and, and remodel it. And I never hear that coming from the town to the board. And I just wanted to clarify that what I was hearing in that discussion was an idea that, that you would actually have to have a second use where what I have experienced as far as my, um, uh, interaction with the town, um, is that they have said it really has no, nothing to do with a second use. If you have a, a single family, my family has three people in it, in a single home that has a second kitchen, with no one using it, you will be charged the extra fee. And I just wanted to clarify that, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Laura. And I, I know I made a little confusion there at the beginning, but if you could just at least state your full name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Laura King, but I won't say where, but I live in, in Netherland. I'll, I'll go with the new tradition.
Oh, it's already complicated enough on this, uh, we're in, trying to figure out who to and keep track of these things. So thank you very much for your comments, and I think, uh, as you heard, we're, we're looking at trying to address those in the, in the near future.
I very much appreciate everyone taking the time to look at this, um, and consider what the very best way to do this is.
Any other members of the public like to speak on non-agenda items? I am not hearing anyone or seeing any hands raised. Uh, so we will move forward into our informational item for this evening, which is a presentation from the Community Planning Assistance for Wildfire.
Yeah, so we have Kelly Johnson and Molly Maury here, and Kelly and Molly, so as you wanna move forward in your presentation, just let Mayor Larson know the next slide, and he'll scroll to the next one.
Uh, okay, that's great, Miranda. And can you hear us? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. And Molly, do you wanna do a sound check there?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Great.
Great. Thanks, thank you, Miranda, and, and thank you, Board of Trustees, for having us. Um, we appreciate the opportunity to, uh, give you a introduction to the Community Planning Assistance for Wildfire, um, project that, um, that Netherland is, is currently in involved with. Um, so, Miranda, you can click a slide. Um, so just so you get a picture, I, we don't have our video on right now. We didn't wanna bog down the system or distract anyone, but, um, the, um, the two, the, uh, Molly and I are, are a team of two from the Community Planning Assistance for Wildfire Program. Um, we're, we're part of a larger team. Um, you can see us on the, uh, left-hand side. Um, and in, uh, Molly, I'll let you introduce yourself quickly, and then I'll do so.
Sure. Thanks, Kelly. Again, my name is Molly Maury, and I am one of the CPo team members. I am a certified land use planner, and I've been focused on wildfire planning specifically for more than 10 years. My company co-founded the program more than five years ago. Uh, I am based out of Littleton, Colorado, so it's unique when I get a chance to work really in my own backyard. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks, Kelly.
Thanks, Molly. And, and my name's Kelly Johnston. I'm, uh, also part of the CPo team, and my role, um, my general role on the CPo team is to provide expertise in forestry, fire behavior, and wildfire risk, and, um, how this implicates with, uh, any other wildfire sort of operations piece. I'm a registered professional forester and a fire behavior analyst, and I am based out of British Columbia, Canada. Uh, so that's why I talk a little bit funny. Um, and, uh, for this, for the Netherland project, I'm the project lead. Molly and I sort of switch back and forth for, with different projects as far as who's leading. We have multiple projects on the go right now. Um, as you see, there's a number of other members. Um, we have Eva Caro, who offers our hazard assessment, um, support, and she's from the Rocky Mountain Research Institute, so she's doing hazard assessment support for other communities. And then we have, um, Headwaters Economics, which is the other partner in the program. Uh, and they offer economic research and policy support, um, sort of behind the scenes if we need that, uh, as we're moving forward. Um, Miranda, you can, uh, click forward. And go ahead, Molly.
Great. So our program takes a holistic approach to community fire adaptation, where we recognize there are many activities and efforts that are required to reduce wildfire risk to communities. Our services are specific to helping communities improve their codes and plans, but we know that there are many other activities communities can and should be participating in, many of which are complementary to our work, and also many topics come up in our work that we acknowledge are important, but we, we just wanna be clear on what, where our role and where we fit into this larger picture. Next slide, please. So through the program, we look at how different features in the built and natural environments are susceptible to wildfire at multiple scales. So, for example, we are interested in individual homes. That's often what people think about when they think about the wildland urban interface. But we're also interested in neighborhoods and critical infrastructure and other developed areas or features that can be susceptible to direct flames and embers during a wildfire event. And next slide. So since 2015, we've been working with dozens of communities across the US in different capacities. Some of our work extends for an entire year, and, uh, for other communities, it's more focused to have a specific set of challenges that are unique to that community. Uh, Kelly will talk a little bit more about our particular services for Netherland. I also wanted to note that we receive our funding from the US Forest Service and other private, private foundations. Uh, so our services, as a result of that, we're really grateful because our services come at no charge to communities. So in essence, it operates like a grant program. We don't call this a grant, but it's very similar in the sense that it's a no-cost opportunity for communities to receive our technical advice. Uh, next slide. And the communities we work with can be viewed across a continuum in terms of different density and development patterns that make the wildland urban interface areas vulnerable in different ways. So we can see in this diagram how some rural areas, for example, have more of an intermixed wooey, while some suburban areas, like places I live in the Front Range, it can experience a wooey interface fire. And so these have different implications for how we craft our wildfire mitigation policies and regulatory strategies. Next slide, and Kelly, back to you.
Thank you. So as you can see, we're, we're focusing on regulations. We have a diverse team, and we, we try and approach this with a different model rather than the traditional consultant model where, you know, the consultant would go away, write a plan, and then come back. It's a, it's really, we're really trying to encourage a collaborative model within our team with the fact that we have land use planners, uh, foresters, wildfire risk people, and research and policy folks within our team, but, but also in working with the community, um, with the community staff, uh, as far as planning fire and, and in the case of Netherland, both planning and fire, um, to help model something that actually is usable and that can be carried on past the, the time of actually the funded assistance that we have. And therefore, so the staff have, have, you know, in, it's created up, it's created a product that the staff helped create. We kinda do the, you know, our job is to do the heavy lifting in, in creating that product and provide the guidance, um, and the expertise from outside of the community, but we very much rely on the expertise within the community. Uh, next slide, please. And so, um, where we sit with, with Netherland is, you know, we obviously had a pretty big interruption and impact um, with the COVID-19 pandemic. Um, and it's, uh, you know, it's, it's affected everyone a, around the globe, obviously. Um, and recognizing that how it's, um, affected, we've, we still wanna offer, um, the same expertise that we were looking to offer, but, but on a, uh, because the, because the, uh, funding expires at the end of the year, we're trying to offer it on a compressed timeframe, um, that was compressed a few months. Um, so we're, we're still offering the expertise to support the, the, uh, the timely planning topics. Um, uh, fall, you, we're, we're engaging in conference calls, and, um, this is actually, we, in, in a year, uh, in air quotes, a normal year, we would actually have an in-person site visit, and this would be part of it. Um, but we're obviously adapting like everyone else is into this virtual presentation. Um, we will be, um, we build, will be as part of the, uh, offer, offering a capacity building training session that, that offers some background on, on how structures burn and how planning, uh, how planning can, can address that. Um, we've been reviewing all of your technical materials, and we will be providing a final deliverable, um, with findings and recommendations, um, in the fall of the program, uh, working with, working with your, with your staff. Uh, next slide, please. And so, um, we can talk a little bit about the capacity building. Um, we find this is a really, a really useful, a useful engagement for most communities. Um, not only do we offer obviously the recommendations, but this helps us, this helps us solidify the rationale behind the recommendations as far as talking about the science and best practices and the understanding on how communities are impacted by wildfire, as well as some of the solutions, um, some of the solutions that, uh, through land use planning that can be used to address that. And, and specifically in, in the, uh, town in Netherland, we're, we're really focusing on the regulatory aspect of, of changing the outcome with how structures burn. Uh, next slide, please. And so, uh, part of that also involves, part of the, the assistance involves this document review and this reviews. Many of the, many of the aspects that Molly touched on, uh, in her slide was, we're looking at, um, the different, the land use policies, uh, the building codes, any of the fire, fire, uh, comprehensive plan, and any of the plans that relate to, relate to, or could relate to, uh, wildfire. And next slide, please. And what this will culminate in is, is a set of, a final deliverable of a set of recommendations. These recommendations are from Gunnison County, um, and we'll talk about that a little bit more, uh, in a couple of slides. But we're really, what we try and do is lay things out so that we provide a little bit of background and follow up with some specific recommendations and implementation advice on how to undertake those recommendations. I'll say this several times, that these recommendations are just that, they're recommendations, they're completely vulnerable, vol, sorry, completely voluntary, and, um, it, it would be up to, it would be up to the, uh, Board of Trustees and the staff to decide how they're, and how they're gonna implement those recommendations or how they're gonna modify them so they're more palatable, um, to be implemented. Uh, next. So an example, um, that we can use, uh, that's very close to, um, what we, what we, the path we expect to go down, um, with Netherland is Gunnison County, Colorado. Um, and you can go to the next slide. Um, Miranda? Thank you. So in Gunnison, uh, County, and I have a typo in there, I'm sorry. It should be Colorado, not Washington. Um, the challenges, um, that they faced were there's, there is existing development, and specifically they had challenges on how to, how to provide fire access and evacuation egress from that existing development, recognizing that there was a lot of developments with only one way in and one way out. Um, they also had, um, a, a mixture of public and private land ownership to, to deal with as far as, um, the different land management and, um, managing, understanding that private ownership, uh, there's certain parameters around that. And they're having a, they've, they're undergoing a, a demographic shift of, of people that are moving into the community that are from outside the community and possibly from areas that, that don't necessarily have a strong history or a threat of wildfire. Um, and so don't really understand, um, because they came from that background, don't really understand, um, that what they're moving into and, and, um, why, why wildfire is actually a, a threat. Uh, next slide, please. And so, um, what we came up with, um, as two of the recommendations, where the first one is, is leveraging the current existing plans and, and, um, inserting language into those plans or addressing wildfire in those plans, um, that can be used to help influence mitigating that wildfire risk. And then, um, something that we've really strongly been looking at is, um, as, is some sort of regulatory perspective on, uh, new development. And in particular, Gunnison County, um, we landed on Gunnison County adopting the, um, IWOE Code or the International Codes Council, Woo, Wooey Code, Model Code with amendments. Um, we recognize that where, where Netherland is, is you're, um, you're directly adjacent to, uh, Boulder County, who already has some regulatory pieces in place, and we've, we understand that, you know, there's a very strong tie, uh, between the development community and what they do in Netherland and what they do in Boulder County. Uh, next slide, please. And so that leaves us with, uh, some, uh, an opening for some questions for, for you guys, um, uh, and the, the Board of Trustees, if you, um, have any questions for us on that quick presentation or the program.
Kelly, I would just add one thing that I think might be important and relevant here is, despite the challenges that have been presented through the, uh, coronavirus pandemic, several years ago, Kelly and I both worked, um, not under the CPo program, but in our own capacities as consultants, we worked as wildfire mitigation specialists for Boulder County, uh, doing, uh, assessments through the wildfire partners program. So that really allowed us to, I just realized my camera was off, so, sorry about that. That allowed us to really get, gain familiarity with the, um, with Netherland and the Netherland area. And so I think that's kind of a nice serendipitous opportunity that although we can't physically travel there, we still have, uh, quite a background in terms of the assessments that we did through that work.
Yeah, thanks, Molly. That's a good point. We actually spent a fair amount of time in, in Netherland, and I was able to enjoy some of your fine cuisine in many of the restaurants. Uh, Miranda, you can, uh, move to the next slide, and, and we can answer any questions that anyone has. Uh, otherwise, there's our, our contact information.
Uh, Kelly, Molly, thank you very much for, uh, for giving us that introduction. I'm really excited to be seeing, uh, seeing the results of this and seeing some recommendations of ways we can improve, improve, improve our code and land use planning to, uh, to reduce the threat here because it's certainly one of those things that, uh, weighs over us and looms over our heads pretty greatly. I just wanna throw it out here if any trustees have questions for either Kelly or Molly.
Yeah, this is Trustee Coombs Ismail. I was just wondering, uh, if in your guys' process, uh, when you say kind of working with communities, if you go beyond working with town staff and work with local residents or get community feedback, or are there any kind of, uh, processes like that that you typically use?
Um, we don't. Um, the reason for that is, is we, um, we, as I said, these are voluntary recommendations, and we leave that, we provide the options and the recommendations, and we leave that up to what your process is for, um, public engagement as moving things forward. We didn't, we don't really wanna complicate the issue for, um, for yourselves. We wanna make sure that, and we don't wanna wear people out and take too much of their time, um, before it actually goes through the official process.
Good to know. Thank you.
Um, well, if there's no other questions, we don't wanna take up too much of your time.
Actually, I have a, I have a question.
Oh, sure.
And, uh, what role does the Forest Service play in your process? Because they're kind of the trump card around here in terms of what gets, what gets thinned and what doesn't. You know, they seem to, uh, go their own way with those kinds of decisions.
Um, so we're, you know, our, as Molly said when we started, um, and we really focus on the land use planning and regulatory framework that, that you as a town have. Um, the, which fault, which does not, um, we recognize that there's a fuel management or vegetation management component that's also being addressed outside of that, um, outside of that, and that's typically addressed through things like the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, uh, in partnerships with that. I don't know if you have anything to add, Molly?
Yeah, I would add that we see the Forest Service as a valuable partner in terms of supporting our program. In some counties where we work, where Kelly alluded to this, that we work with, um, counties to conduct a hazard assessment, they play a more significant role because they develop that assessment. Uh, however, they don't inform local jurisdictional land use authority. So in other words, they give us as a partner, if they attend meetings, they give us great feedback. They help us with understanding perhaps some of the local context in terms of vegetation and ecosystem and other related fire challenges and fire history. However, they are not writing any of our recommendations or stepping outside of their world to inform our land use planning world.
Right. Yeah, I think we have, and you, I'm sure you're aware of this, a lot of our properties back up to Forest Service land. And, you know, you get into land use issues that might or might not impact the forest, so. But I appreciate that you're trying to deal with us at the local level and the kinds of, uh, rules or regulations we can write in land use planning.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and it, this is, that's actually why we chose, um, Gunnison. Um, and we, we actually deal with a lot of communities that have a significant, a significant component of, of federal lands, particularly forest lands. Um, and, uh, we see this, uh, again, and, and certainly, you know, in that other part of the wheel that Molly brought, that Molly displayed in the slide, you know, that's, there's many other components of that wheel where the Forest Service would fit in, uh, in, um, in completing a fire-adapted community approach.
Okay, thank you.
Kelly, Molly, thank you very much. And yeah, let us know if there's anything we can do to aid and assist or give any information.
Thank you, and thank you for having us, and you can expect to hear back from us, uh, towards the end of the project with, uh, an update.
Looking forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys, very much. Really excited for this.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Have a good night, everyone.
All right, then. We will move into, uh, our action items for this evening, a collection of resolutions. And, uh, these have, uh, all come out of, um, well, the DDA or community input. Uh, the first one here is the, a proclamation declaring July 25th, 2020, High School Graduate Recognition Day. This was something that, uh, members of the community had brought to us, uh, wanting to somehow better highlight our graduates from our high schools, both Chinook West and Netherland Senior High School this year because they are missing out on so much of what usually takes place in those last couple months of a senior year. And so, uh, one thing we've come up with is, uh, declaring July 25th, the High School Graduate Recognition Day with this proclamation, and then entering it into the record with their names so that, uh, it's gonna be further recorded that it is their day, July 25th. And as we get towards that day, which is the day that Boulder Valley Schools is going to actually hold graduation for Netherland High School. Chinook West has actually graduated, held a graduation ceremony, but Netherland High School is holding theirs on July 25th. We're going to do some more outreach, make sure that everyone knows that we're doing this to celebrate the students that day, uh, along with, you know, giving nice copies of this proclamation to each of the students with a sort of a, just a letter of congratulations, letter of, um, yeah, congratulations on having graduated high school and moving forward. So this, uh, is attached, is a draft of the proclamation that was, uh, written by Karen Garrity and myself. And, uh, I'm gonna throw this open to the Board of Trustees if you have any comments on it or thoughts before we go to public comment.
And Mayor Larson, we do have, um, the principal for the Netherland High School on, if you'd like him to, to speak as well.
Uh, please, actually, I did not see that. Yeah, let's, uh, there he is, Rick. Please, um. Uh, yes, there we go. Welcome. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Oh, the pleasure is all mine. I, uh, I was thrilled to hear that we were gonna do something like this. Um, it's certainly been very challenging finding ways to celebrate the class of 2020. And this, this certainly helps a ton. We're moving closer to some definitive activities on the 25th. We're waiting for a little more guidance from public health. Uh, we will include this as part of our ceremony regardless of what that ceremony looks like. Uh, we have lots of things we're going to be sharing with students to try to keep it as normal as possible. Uh, I'm just really super grateful. All of the communities in the mountains have really wrapped their arms around the class of 2020 from the different schools. And um, this is probably the, the biggest honor that I've seen so far that the town is declaring this as the uh, Netherland Middle Senior High School Graduate Day on the 25th of July. So we're really super grateful. Um, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, looking forward to, you know, as you get closer to making some plans, let us know what those are. And we'd love to, you know, continue to help out and help celebrate in every way we can.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Uh, so I'm just going to work down the Board of Trustees for any uh, comments or thoughts before public comment, beginning with Trustee Apt.
We're certainly happy to join in this celebration and uh, I'm really glad we can uh, we can help out in any way we can.
Trustee Coombs Ismail?
Yeah, I think that it's great to do what we can, uh, even if it's not enough uh, that we do this. I think it's something, so we should, we should do it.
Mayor Protem Baumhofer?
Getting to the mute. Um, yeah, I'm glad we're being able to reach out and do this. Glad to uh, see that we're able to virtually at least be able to speak with the principal and hear his thoughts. And just uh, heartfelt uh, congratulations to all the seniors out there, uh, both on the high school level as well as all those college seniors that we have in town that may have graduated this year and didn't get to quite have the celebration they might have desired as well. So glad we're doing this and let's go for it.
Trustee Taylor?
I'm probably the wrong person to ask since I didn't attend my high school graduation, but I still think this is a good idea, so I'm all for it.
Trustee Danforth?
Yes, I, I think this is uh, a wonderful thing to do, even uh, any small thing that we could do um, and to recognize our graduates. So I think it's a wonderful thing.
And Trustee Corvallin?
Uh, did uh, with everybody else, really happy we can do something. Um, I, I don't know if they want to put those photos back out of all the graduating seniors, but I really enjoyed seeing those um, on the street during the parade and um, I don't know. But thanks for getting that together.
We're going to be using those yard sign. I'm sorry, am I allowed to keep speaking?
Yeah, go ahead.
We have, we've, we've collected all of those and we're going to be using them again uh, when we do the official ceremony on the 25th. So you'll see them again.
Oh, good.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you for mentioning that.
Great. Um, thank you, Rick. Uh, as this is an action item, I'm going to open it up to the public who would like to, anyone who would like to speak on this matter for three minutes? Raise your hand or just un, begin speaking. Not seeing or hearing anything, I'll bring it back to the Board of Trustees for any final thoughts, comments, or motion to adopt proclamation.
Motion to adopt.
Trustee Taylor, motions?
Second. I'm over.
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, Trustee Apt?
Yes.
Trustee Danforth?
Yes.
Trustee Coombs Ismail?
Yes.
Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baumhofer?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin?
Yes.
Very good. Um, this is Passan. I think as we get closer to July 25th, I want to make a big push on our town's social media to highlight this. So uh, like we did with the previous, the proclamation a couple of weeks ago, I'd like to do a little video in front of uh, maybe in front of the Netherland High School or the, the sign downtown and post it to, post the reading of this to the town's uh, social media channels. We will move forward to a second resolution. Uh, this one is more uh, somber. Uh, this one is more timely with the events of the last few weeks. And is uh, something that has come up, uh, was brought up to the Board of Trustees by Trustee Coombs Ismail. So I would like to hand it over to him to speak on this as a introduction.
Yeah, I think that we are currently in what, what at least should be a watershed moment in our, in our country, um, involving reevaluating a lot of our, of our institutions and how they operate. Um, I think that Netherland should be an example and that we should be part of that reevaluation and that uh, kind of accept that this affects us as well. As remote in the mountains as we may be, uh, we're part of uh, some of these institutional practices. And this gives us an opportunity to say that we, that we understand, that we hear uh, how people are suffering and that we are willing as a community to uh, kind of look to, look within ourselves to make some uh, changes that we may need to make uh, in response to uh, what's been going on. So, yeah.
Couldn't agree more. This is, I, I, like you, I hope this is a watershed moment. I hope this is a time where we can start to really look at some of these underlying systemic, you know, systemic processes of racism that were within much of our society that have existed for centuries now and can start to make progress on overturning those and healing the wounds of the last couple hundred years. Um, trustees would like to speak on this. I'm gonna go in reverse order this time, beginning with uh, Tanya.
Um, yeah, I'm in full agreeance with Netherland taking a stand in support of Black Lives Matter. Um, it's the least we can do.
Lindsay?
I agree. I think this is a wonderful thing for us to do, um, to proclaim that that Black Lives Matter and and that we understand our history. Um, I, I think every town should recognize that and and shout it from the rooftop that Black Lives Matter. So I'm happy that we're doing this.
Julian?
I've read the wording of this resolution and I'm tremendously impressed. Um, I was also pleased to hear Trustee Coombs Ismail refer to this as a watershed. And while I don't know it's a watershed, I, I think it just actually might be. And I'm reminded of the words of Mahatma Gandhi. I don't remember the exact quotation, but basically he said, uh, they uh, they deride you, they shoot you, they torture you, they make fun of you, then you win. And that's what we saw with same-sex marriage, where everyone hated them saying same-sex marriage. There was no way that was ever going to change. We were never going to let that happen. Even President Obama didn't like same-sex marriage, and then we had same-sex marriage. And my hope is that perhaps there are towns all over the country doing this sort of thing with enough resolutions and with enough protests and with enough rational people standing up and saying, this has to happen, Black Lives Matter, and here's what this means. I'm hopeful we may see actual changes. So yes, I'm very much in favor of it. Uh, thank you, Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Mayor Protem Baumhofer, Jonathan?
Yeah, you know, I'm just gonna have to second what Julian said about the uh, the wording and the writing of this resolution. Um, it's extraordinarily powerful wording. And I think you nailed it right on the head there, Eric. Um, and as Julian said, I would hope this could be a watershed moment, not just for the society, but for many individuals as well, who may have been struggling with this and who have been struggling with this. Um, you know, I guess, you know, injustice is going to prevail if we continue to keep silent. And where there's silence, you're basically an accomplice. So I'm in full support of this and think uh, it's the very least we can do as a town to really bring it to the forefront as well as acknowledge that this needs to be a discourse uh, every level of government and on every level of our social interaction right now. And that we need to make this a priority to really start to discuss and heal these wounds and make actual reform. So just thank you, Eric, and uh, all for this.
Alan?
Yes, thank you, Eric, for bringing this forward. I think it's uh, long overdue and as a nation that we face these issues. And uh, you know, those of us who lived through the sixties uh, and thought a lot of these problems were solved by legislation are seeing that a lot of these things have unraveled over time. And I was shocked to hear that someone in our community who was active in Black Lives Matters uh, initiatives, demonstrations, uh, has been threatened with harassment. So it just goes to show that even in our little town of Netherland, which we feel is very progressive and very enlightened, there are some individuals who are not. And so I think it's important to make a statement as a community, this is what our values are and this is what we care about. So thanks again, Eric.
Here, here. I just want to also, you know, point out that Eric wrote this entire resolution and is really, really well-written. And I think we're, we're seeing why we're lucky to have you on the board with us, Eric. So thank you for doing this. Uh, we'll open it up here for public comment if anyone from the public would like to speak to this matter. See a hand up? Laura? Okay, please introduce yourself.
I just wanted to second what, uh, I've got my shirt on today for that. Second, uh, what um, Eric has said here of Trustee Coombs Ismail. Um, and I'm proud of the, this community for taking um, the effort and the time and the initiative to, to say where they stand on this and make it clear to the world. And I'm, it makes me proud to be a member of this community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura King. Anyone else? If not, I would like to bring this back to the board and look for a motion to adopt Resolution 2024.
This is Trustee Coombs Ismail. I just want to uh, you know, point out a particular aspect of this resolution in section three that says that we need to actively work to amplify, to amplify black voices in the struggle for black liberation. And I think that that's something that we should uh, take uh, to heart and not uh, just leave it on the page of this resolution. Uh, because um, I think we, we all notice sort of the voices that have been speaking even today are not those black voices. And so we have some work to do.
Very good. Eric, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Motion to adopt uh, Resolution, can't remember the name, 2024.
Second. This is Alan, second.
Miranda, we have a.
Everybody's stepping into second.
We have a motion and multiple seconds on the table.
Trustee Coombs Ismail?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Apt?
Yes.
Trustee Danforth?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baumhofer?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin?
Yes.
Mayor Larson?
Yes. So adopted unanimously. And uh, and like Eric, Eric said, this is not the final step. This is really just a statement of our intent, our goals, and we must continue to work every day to amplify those voices, to address the prejudice and to reverse the systemic racism that exists in the, in the country around us. So this is really just the beginning of our work.
This is Trustee Taylor. I wonder if uh, we might want to keep this in mind as we consider Vision 2030. Is there anything this town can do to actively help to address this kind of inequality? We are a surprisingly white town. I'm not sure how that happened. I'm not sure what the history is. But we certainly can still participate. Um, all races within the town can still participate in advocating for this publicly. And perhaps as a part of Vision 2030.
And just to uh, add to that, Trustee Taylor, is that not only Vision 2030, which I do think is important, but also the upcoming uh, budget reviews that we have uh, to start thinking how we can materially uh, put our money where our mouths are, to be blunt.
Here, here.
All right. Um, yeah, seems hard to move on from that, but uh, we will move on to another resolution on a totally different subject. Um, uh, funding for the, for the NDDA project to ensorrow electrical power at the Gersio Performance Base.
Hi there. This is Hope from the Netherland Downtown Development Authority. And how are you? Hope everybody's well? I'm really excited about the, that just resolution on Black Lives Matter. That means a lot. Um, so the NDDA is requesting to borrow funds uh, at the amount of $15,000 to cover the expense for the electrical install at the Gersio Performance Base. Initially, we thought it was going to cost more money. Actually, we thought it was going to be $25,000. But Chris Peltier worked hard and worked with Excel and the electrical panel was installed, as you can see on the budget, for free. So there was a recognition that with the electrical panel exposed, there'd be a need for it to have some kind of shelter or protection. So no one would tamper with it and possibly hurt themselves. Um, the electrical box has gone through a very long process. As you can see, it began back in February of 2019. Um, ProSAB meetings were attended uh, during the summer, actually, of August. That's when ProSAB really became very active and engaging in rewriting a grant. And so they took on a lot of the tasks associated with the electrical box. And one of their former board members um, met with myself and Chris Peltier and Mark Stringfellow and discussed locations and different specifications. Of course, in talking with Excel, it was, it seemed like a very fluid project. There were no kind of final results to it quite yet, until around February, when Chris came to our, the board meeting and let us know about the need for a shelter and let us know that Excel was going to be covering the actual panel. Um, so NDDA board meters, members went to the February ProSAB meeting and a shed was approved. And unfortunately, after February, that's when everything became a little bit chaotic. So, and as our board members, uh, board meetings kind of evolved this last month and now we're kind of back on track with projects we have been working on. Um, we received a budget from Public Works in the amount of $15,000 and we are putting that before you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Hope. Any questions for the Board of Trustees for Hope, Chris? Eric?
Hi there. This is Trustee Coombs Ismail. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Sorry, I think I messed something up. Um, uh, I guess uh, what I'm craving, and I guess I'm always craving this, is more detail. Um, you know, the, the line item budget isn't exactly a line item. And I would love to know like what the actual costs are and what it actually looks like and see it all broken down. And it's not that I'm against, you know, spending this money to do it. I just really crave uh, more detail in these budgets.
Sure. Um, so as Hope said, and I apologize for not providing more.
So as Hope said, and I apologize for not providing more detailed information. As Hope said, that the transformer was provided by Excel through the town's franchise agreement, so that was very helpful. As these transformers, and this one's a 50 KVA transformer, can be pretty expensive, in excess of $20,000. So that was very beneficial to the town. And so we provided a budget to DDA. It was a while ago. I think it was before February 2019. Because we have been working on this for a while, but we did provide a budget to the DDA of estimated costs. And I think the engineering was around $3,000. The bids that I got for electrical ranged between $10,000 and $15,000, and I got three quotes for that. And then town staff provided some services as far as constructing the pad and receiving input for protecting this, this service. And then we'll continue to provide services like trenching and that kind of thing to help mitigate the, the hard costs of this project. And then we also have volunteers who construct the shed from local contractors in, in the community. And so all in all, the true costs really are just the electrical and the cost of the electrician and the engineering and some materials.
And if I can just quickly comment that this is the, the budget that's set up for it, but I'm confident that the town accountant, who is now our town accountant, and I will kind of true everything up at the end, the town accountant and I are working on learning about if TIF funds aren't spent, you know, putting back them back into the TIF bucket. So just to let you know that. Thanks.
So just, just to clarify then, in that $3,116.36 of miscellaneous expenses, we don't anticipate actually using those? Is that, is that right?
Well, it was, it was requested of us that there was a little bit of a cushion because, as Chris mentioned, a lot of the, the costs kind of fluctuated throughout the year. There were, there were tentative budgets, but nothing this firm. So I guess getting it down to the 15 and, and having a 3,000 cushion as just in case. And that would be a Chris question of what just in case could mean.
So for example, in working with the electrician, I did receive a quote, quotes on the original design, but not clearly on the location. So depending on where the location was chosen, the length between where the transformer is and the final resting spot for this utility shed would affect the cost. So I just wanted to be sure that we were able to cover that. And then again, we relied so much on, you know, volunteering and folks that want to contribute to the project and trying to be resourceful. I didn't want to discount my pennies and at the end not have enough and have to come back and ask for more. So I, I thought it was a fair, it's fair to have a little bit of a buffer or contingency to ensure that I can get this project completed. And I won't, you know, if it doesn't get spent, I'll give back. It's not, I just want to be sure that there's enough money to complete the project.
Any further questions, trustees? Okay, I am going to open this up. Public comments? Anyone from the public would like to speak?
So Mayor Larson, Kathy and Chai had sent in an email just a few minutes ago, so I was just going to read that word for word of what she sent, if that's okay.
Okay.
So Kathy and Chai, out of town, limits near Netherland resident. I noticed the electrical box in the park is already built and is not built in the spot decided on at any of the meetings I attended. I really can't believe it. If I remember, there was a map and the build was not in the location reflected in the map. Why the change in location that I thought ProSAP, Rob, Deb, Chris, Parry, Amanda, all thought was best? What meaning can I reference that shows a change from the location that was decided at the NDDA and ProSAP meetings I attended? Did Town Public Works build the building? And when can people obtain the breakdown of the $15,000 spent to build that specific structure? My understanding was that it was only for the build and that Excel was paying for the rest electrical.
Chris, do you want to speak to the location? I think you already spoke to the budget part.
Yeah. I'm guessing accurate, the location is in the exact spot of where it's supposed to be. But, you know, it's not GPS, we're not going to say exact. But if you look at the several options that provided to the DDA and to ProSAP, it is exactly or relatively close to where everyone agreed for it to be. And at the last ProSAP meeting, this was a discussion, I believe Eric had it in the meeting. And then in that emails, in that meeting, I sent out to all the board members what was agreed to of where the location of these structures were going to go. So I don't agree with that. It is where it's supposed to be. It is an option too, which is what was decided to by the, the task force overseeing the, the project. So, yeah, no, it's where it's supposed to be.
If I, if I could quickly speak to this issue, because, because I also have, you know, just received from comments from folks that they don't believe that, that it was built where it was agreed upon. So whether or not it was, I do think that this brings up just an, an issue of communication that I think that various advisory boards and the NDDA need to be communicating with each other with a little more clarity and that maybe from the advisory board level, if there is, you know, a concern about specifics, that we need to be very, very specific and, and give town staff the support and the instruction that they need in order to, to do, to do these things the way that the advisory boards and the, and the NDDA want them done. And I think that it's a communication issue and it is a kind of coordination issue. And I do think that it is important to bring that up now because this is not obviously the first time that these sorts of questions have come up. And so I do think that we need to look at process and procedure and make sure that we're, that we're doing it right from the advisory board level to staff and then to implementation of the project.
The location was clearly staked for approval prior to constructing the facility.
If you look at the map, actually, it, it is, and it's kind of in a good location too, because it goes right up against the fence, basically near the AmeriGas. And it was on one of the drawings that Chris had sent and given. It, it's located as the number one spot there.
Absolutely where it was agreed. Hands down, absolutely where we agreed to put it. And that's where it sits today.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this?
Yes, please.
Please identify yourself.
Yeah, thank you. This is Jessie Ansari, Chair of ProSAP, Parks Recreation, Open Space Advisory Board. Yeah, just to quickly know about this, Chris has probably received emails too. I've sent them on to ProSAP. The location is relatively close for sure. It is, it is along that line, but it's not exact, unfortunately. An email I've sent out just kind of explains why we really do need to be exact with down to the precise footage on Barker Meadows Park. It is a fairly hallowed ground for a lot of people. So I will be addressing a couple of these questions at our meeting. Unfortunately, it'll be too late to further discuss this with the BOT. But one of the questions I do have is, is why is the transformer located quite so far from the shed? So there's about a 20 to 25 foot distance between the two. This will like further kind of affect all of our decisions between, from the restroom and further on from there, because we were really trying to cluster the buildings to have the transformer, the shed and the restroom really clustered together. But now, you know, it's not going to be possible to do that. So it is just a matter of communications, I think. And I think we can, I think we can always keep working on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessie. Any other public comment? Not seeing or hearing, I will bring it back to the board for anyone who, any board members who would like further final comments or to make a motion. I hear it, and Tanya?
Yeah, just listening to Jessie's question, I'm wondering if anyone has an answer for that.
Yeah, so it was never agreed where the transformer was going to go. So there was never a discussion that the transformer was going to go in the exact location of the panel. In working with Excel to place the transformer, it was critical that to reduce costs and to make the project stay within budget, to have Excel move the transformer as close to the final destination that was agreed for the, for the panel as possible. So there's a cost associated with running waders and stuff. Excel allowed me to move it as close as they would allow me to move it. I had them set it right there. The transformer, it's not a big structure. It's a two-by-two structure. It's pretty discreet. And I understand the concern of trying to clump these things together, but I am driven by what's on the ground and what's under the ground and have to be able to make decisions when they're given to me. So it is where the transformer is where it is. And I did make the decision to put it there based on conditions on the ground. That is my job. However, the, the electrical box is going to be roughly in the location that was decided.
Further questions, comments?
I just have a quick one. I was on the NDDA website trying to find the map that everyone's referencing. I just wanted to know where, where I might be able to find that for my own reference.
It is not on the NDDA website. It is on the, our last agenda.
I'll try to pull it off. I'll try to send it to you guys.
The 4, 417 agenda?
Uh, actually, it's on the, it's on the 21220 agenda. It says image of electrical box location. I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions, comments? Or do we have a motion from a member of the board of trustees?
This is Alan.
We have a motion for Resolution 2020-22?
I'll second.
Second from Trustee Danforth?
Okay. Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Danforth?
Yes.
Trustee Apt?
Yes.
Trustee Coombs Ismail?
Yes.
Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-22 is passed unanimously. We have a second DDA item regarding funding for porta potties. Are you going to also introduce this, Hope?
Sure. And this was actually something that Miranda had brought to the NDDA because of COVID and what's happening with our businesses and public restrooms not being available. And I can also imagine that even when they are available, there's a possibility that people might not feel comfortable about that. The town of Netherland rented some porta potties. They recognized that cleaning it regularly was going to cost a lot of money. The parks only has a small budget. So they came to us and asked us for some funding, either $3,280 or $4,120 because the visitor center, one regular porta potty would be added there. And so the NDTH decided to fully support Miranda's request and support funding for $4,120. And the spreadsheet is pretty detailed. It goes four months, June to September. And that's it.
And that $4,000 period?
Yes, part, I didn't hear you. Can you say that again, Mayor Larson?
I was just confirming that $4,000 runs through September 2020.
Yes, and that's the, it was an additional cost that they were looking at to include one regular porta potty at the visitor center. And we just felt that that was probably best, better to have a little bit more. We definitely have a lot of tourists coming through our towns over the weekends and some days during the week.
So Justice, this is Miranda. Point of clarification too. So right now, we have just the two porta potties at the visitor center. Our plan is to stick with the two. And then if needed, because they're being used so much, then we will add in the third. So by approving us for the $4,120, it allows us that, that opportunity to use the additional funds for another porta potty. If, if say it's not needed, then we won't, we'll obviously only request the funds for whatever we end up spending through June through September.
All right. Thank you very much. Answer my question. Any other, does any member of the board of trustees have questions for Miranda or Hope on this?
This is Trustee Taylor. I have a question.
Julian, please.
What is the purpose of this? Is it to limit the town's liability, to protect public safety, or what? What is the purpose of it?
So it's, it's twofold. I mean, our Public Works team specifically, our Parks team is responsible for cleaning the public facilities. And there's only two of them. And really, Public Works Streets Department is short-staffed. The concern is also from the health and safety standpoint. I know like CDPHE, you know, Public Health recommends that restaurants clean their bathrooms hourly. And, you know, while there isn't that same recommendation specifically for public restrooms, it is a concern that we just don't have the manpower to be cleaning them every hour. And also if someone amongst our team got sick, you know, Chris only has a handful of employees. So the recommendation was porta potties and a lot of municipalities are doing the same thing. They're serviced quite often. They have the hand sanitizers that will also be serviced. So it is kind of a combination of both.
And yet, the porta potty is serviced once per week.
So the service, the one at Chapita, the two at Chapita are serviced one time per week. The visitor center is served twice per week. Yeah, again, it's not, there is no requirement for how often public restrooms are serviced. It's not quite like a restaurant. But because of the kind of liability to our team and the potential of losing a team member from illness, we felt like porta potties was the better route to go. And this decision was-
And yet, the porta potty doesn't satisfy our original requirement for cleaning once a day. Meaning it doesn't support public safety as well as cleaning our bathrooms once a day. Correct?
So we can increase the free, well, so I guess it gets tricky. So Aeropir doesn't have the manpower either to be cleaning it every day. Now, you know, this decision was made by the Recovery and Resiliency Team that this, you know, was the best route to go. Obviously, the goal is to, to clean any facility regularly. But again, we just don't have the, the manpower to do that. Um, obviously the goal is to, to clean any facility regularly, um, but again, we just don't have the, the manpower to do that.
Hmm, I, 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 as, as I, as I look at this and as I review various recommendations regarding dealing with, um. Washrooms in a time of pandemic. I, I'm almost wondering if this money couldn't be used to prep our bath, our washrooms. To be better, uh, aligned with COVID requirements such that they actually don't require daily cleaning. And can be used probably more safely, I mean, I, I'm not positive, but I would think more safely than a porta potty. For example, installing industrial level, uh, ventilation with a filter in each of those bathrooms. And modifying the doorknob so that it can be operated without touching it with your hands and then putting up appropriate signage, that almost looks like. A more nearly permanent solution for, so that we're ready for the next pandemic. And it, I'm, I'm not positive it would cost more than porta potties, I, I, I'll, I'll defer to, to Chris on that, but. The porta potties look like we're saying, uh, yeah, we're not gonna be able to clean this stuff, so we're gonna turn it over to somebody else who also won't clean this stuff. And I'm not seeing the advantage.
Um, yeah, thanks for that comment, and I, I understand there is a struggle with, um. With that dilemma. I don't disagree, um, however, to Miranda's point, it, we don't have the staff to clean this hourly. We don't actually have the budget to transform these bathrooms and into something that, um. Could be what you're suggesting, over time, we have improved these bathrooms considerably. Um, they used to get vandalized a lot, and so that's why the doors, you know, the roll down doors would come down because they'd get broken into at night and, and. And wrecked, and then, um, it would impact the budget considerably. Um, and then, um, yeah, so. I don't have a good answer for that. I mean, we are in a safe, like, home order.
And I, I understand we're between a rock and a hard place, I mean, I, I, I get that, and, um, I suppose. I mean, I suppose I could be in favor of this provisionally, but I would like to think through. In the fullness of time. How we could make our washrooms perhaps sturdier to deal with the type of vandalism we're seeing, I don't know, that would take some study. And to prepare them for the next pandemic, because this seems like, this seems like. This seems like something that looks like a solution that actually isn't, so that's, that is my only concern, and, and I'm, I'm done now, thank you.
Trustee Taylor, this is Miranda, I do think, you know, we could look into, maybe Chris and I could look into the cost, um, I think at this point. We're kind of just asking for this temporary funding, to your point, just kind of to get us through this summer season, and maybe there is additional work, I think the concern is. If not approved, um, that, that the parks budget really can't afford the four thousand dollars, I mean, that budget's only fifteen thousand dollars altogether, so that's taking. Almost a third of that budget just for porta potties, so that's why we asked for DDA support. Um, but I do think we could look into further long-term, Chris, maybe we could look into that together, like what.
I, I would greatly appreciate that, because if we couldn't demonstrate that the bathroom, uh, circulates the air every minute or so. And we can demonstrate the doors open without, you're needing to use your hands. And we provide appropriate signage regarding how to wash your hands. That becomes an actual reasonably safe bathroom that doesn't need to be cleaned every hour, doesn't even need to be cleaned every day. And, so yes, I, I would greatly appreciate it, Miranda, if, if you could put together a suggestion with, with Chris's help, uh. Or at least tell us what that's gonna cost, I think that would be something to look into, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to just let everybody know that this funding, if approved tonight, is going to be part of the grant that I'm applying to. DOLA for, and that's the, so some of the funds that the DDA has put out, um, in relation to COVID. Um, we're going to apply to see if we can get back, so I'll, I'll let you know if that happens.
Yeah, I did wanna have to. Only a few years ago, our parks budget was only five thousand dollars a year. Um, so, you know, over time, we have increased it, currently, um, the fifty thou, fifteen thousand dollar budget also includes weed mitigation that was prioritized as well. Um, so a quarter of that budget goes towards just mitigating noxious weeds. Um, around, so.
No.
We really are stretching funds. So we're really stretching, um, a limited amount of funds.
Um, I thought we approved three thousand dollars with the, uh, beautification resolution for weeds. Yes, you did, and that's for the noxious weeds in the DDA district. And, uh, Chris is talking about, um, areas around the district, like the community center. That have a lot of the, the chamomile weed.
Um, I just wanted to say I, I really agree with everything Julian said. Cause when I first read this resolution, it's like, talks about how bathrooms have to be cleaned, how, how, you know, how they're germy and et cetera, et cetera, and then it's like. The solution is a porta potty that gets cleaned once to twice a week. I was like, ooh, well, everything you said just told me that I gotta clean a bathroom once a week, and now you're putting something out there for residents to use. Um, that is not really a safe place, um, it's just kind of a stopgap, quick solution, um, and so I would, uh. Back up that let's research how to turn our bathrooms, um, into a cleaner, safer place and find the funding, instead of just throwing money away at a porta potty. To do that, and then hiring a person just to clean, you know. The bathrooms, if you don't have the staff to do it, um, once a day, twice a day, I think ultimately, this pandemic's not going anywhere. Um, and so we're gonna need to think of long-term solutions, if the money now, I'm gonna prove it, because yeah, you gotta do something today. But I don't think this needs to just be the solution for the long term here. Um, it, to me, it's saying, uh, you value the, the safety of your employees more than you value the safety of the residents and tourists that come to this town. Um, by providing them just basically something that's not like ideal, where they can't really, you know, but that's, that's just. Um, I get it, you know, I get we're at an emergency right now, so, you know, we don't have time for long solutions, but like I said, it's not going away.
I agree, and I don't, um, well, I agree for the most part, I don't think we're really trying to value employees more so than anybody else. And wouldn't frame it that way, um, we do, uh, measure how many people use the bathrooms on a busy day, we put door counters on there a couple of years ago. Um, you could have five hundred people using that bathroom lying up all day long, so it is a very busy place. Um, also, it is a seven day a week ability, and my staff doesn't work seven days a week. Um, although I do stagger them for people that we have, including myself. Um. Go and manage roads and parks and everything else, um, that the job entails, so it's very difficult and hard to, to, um. Really manage those priorities and decide which one is more important than the other. I do value tourists, um, coming to Netherland and wanna make sure that the facilities, you know, are adequate for them. Um, but if there isn't staff to do it, or staff is sick from COVID nineteen, then it sort of defeats the purpose. So I'm not sure we're at a point where, um, I, I feel confident that the pandemic is ebbing. And we're not gonna have, um, infections or, you know, something. Diseases, um, coming to our town, um, but I agree, I, I'll work with Miranda and try to, um. Test, um, the cost to improve the bathrooms further.
This is trustee Coombs Ismail, I, uh, just say that I, I do, I had the same concerns, uh, as trustees Taylor and Corvallon. Uh, coming into this resolution, and what I was wondering is, why couldn't this four thousand dollars simply be allocated to a janitorial service for our bathrooms? And, and if that would actually make much of a difference, uh. To use porta potties versus maybe paying someone to clean our bathrooms as regularly as you would a porta potty?
I think the one challenge, and, and I, and we, we definitely can, if that's, uh, the direction of the board, is to, to look into that instead. Um, the bathrooms right now, the porta potties are twenty-four seven access, and to Chris's point, our visitor center are not, they're typically only open. Chris, about eight hours a day, um, so that is something to consider, is that we typically close those around four o'clock, leaving the evenings. Um, open just because of that vandalism concern, so that is, I just wanted to make sure that's noted.
Well, and one thing I wanted to say is the difference is that in normal times, when it's not a pandemic. The businesses are actually open and people can use their bathrooms. Uh, we're not experiencing that right now, there are some, um, businesses that are open and allowing for bathrooms, but not everybody. So we need to provide the, uh, bathrooms even at night. And like, like, uh, Miranda's saying and Chris is saying, twenty-four seven, so this is a different situation. We're offering, you know, we're trying to offer something that's available in a much different capacity than we've had in the past. Due to the, uh, stay-at-home order and the way the businesses are handling their bathrooms and availability to the public.
That helps, thank you, Karen, um, I, I can kind of see now why this is kind of measurably different than, you know, just hiring a janitorial service. It is, it, it still seems like porta potties are particularly dangerous to, to public health, I mean, that they are really tight spaces with a lot of surfaces. Where you can't, you know, keep yourself particularly far away from anything, and so the idea that it's, uh, benefits public health, I'm not so sure. Maybe it does help alleviate the burden, um, uh, in other regards, but yeah, it's tough for me, this one.
Any further board comments before we go to public?
Yeah, I'll just jump in here, um, real good talks here from Tanya, Eric, and Julian, um. I think it definitely is worthwhile to look into the visitor center bathrooms, um, what we'd be looking at for ventilation is probably installation of an ERV unit, electric recycling ventilator unit. Uh, it's pretty much what they require in Boulder County use and, and houses, cause they require new builds in Boulder County to be hermetically sealed. So it, uh, basically cycles outside air with the inside condition air, um. Be interesting to look at how that's affected with pandemics and the air quality guidelines for the pandemic. But that would definitely be a pretty easy installation into those bathrooms, basically just punching a hole through the wall and then installing kind of a excessively big fart fan in those bathrooms. Um, when this was brought to the DDA, it was definitely brought, as Karen said, as kind of a helping out the businesses who are. Having issues with kind of providing restrooms, and it kind of comes down to sanitation in town, as well as Chris mentioned, a cost benefit analysis of what's in our budget. Both the parks budget, what's our staffing, and, uh. What's the best solution for the time being, so I do wanna support the town staff's decision here to have done this and then, um, reached out to the DDA. And I think something to key in on here is that this is the DDA reimbursing, uh, Parks and Rec budget. And that the DDA is currently working on a grant to get this reimbursed, so while it might not seem like the greatest use of money. Um, it's kind of that caught between a rock and a hard place, and I think the discussion that came out of this from the. This being in front of us tonight is worth giving the, uh, not a four to both Miranda and Chris to look at. How much it would cost to renovate those units and maybe even if we could get volunteer labor to come in and do so. That's about my thoughts, but I'm for this, cause I believe it's, uh, another one of those kind of decisions that we're making to adapt to. A situation that none of us are really exactly sure how to handle, and we're doing our best.
Would anyone from the public like to add their comments for three minutes?
Mayor Larson, Kathleen Chabai had sent in a comment, so I'll read that. Um, she said, bad idea, either town wants the DDA to build real bathrooms or don't waste the money, porta potties are so not clean and unsafe. Open the bathrooms and have hand sanitizer in there.
Okay, thank you.
Ron Mitchell.
Ron.
Ron Mitchell, I'd like to make a comment. Um, we're in a crisis situation and we have to adapt as quickly as possible. Uh, one of the things that's been happening when the first porta potty filled up, people just urinated down First Street. And I think that contamination is probably worse than, uh, the fact that the, the porta potties are not ideal. But, uh, the merchants on First, at least on the north side, were out with garden hoses and buckets and washing down the walls and the little cr- crannies that. Exist between some of the buildings where people just stepped in and urinated. So unfortunately, it's, I think, under the circumstances, the best that we can do. And the DDA board voted unanimously to do it, noting those, some of those circumstances, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any other members of the public?
This is Laura King.
Yes, Laura.
I would just like to say that I think it makes sense to do this on a temporary basis, and I'm thankful to, to the DDA to donate the money. But I do think that the pandemic isn't going anywhere, I don't think anybody thinks that it's gonna be over in September, and although our. Bigger tourist season will probably be over then, if, we could be dealing with this for a long time, so. As Julian, uh, as Julian Taylor said, you know, we might be thinking about the next pandemic, but we, we might just be thinking about the long-term effects of this pandemic. Uh, we could be dealing with this next summer, so when you think about the money that it will cost for these porta potties versus trying to set up something that's sustainable. Um, it may be worthwhile to really look at that, uh. Sooner rather than later, not right away, everyone is doing their best to adapt to the current situation in the busiest time of year. You know, this, this probably needs to happen the way it is, but, um, with the caveat of looking at. Um, what are the next steps here, cause it, it doesn't seem like this is gonna go away, do we wanna pay for porta potties forever? Um, you know, not forever, but for, you know, a much longer period of time than this four thousand one hundred and twenty dollars is gonna pay for. So I, I appreciate the comments, um, from, uh, trustee, uh, Coombs Ismail and from trustee Corvallon and from trustee Taylor. Um, and from Ron Mitchell, um, and others about just thinking about. What do we do beyond this timeframe of September, uh, beyond just porta potties? Because we're probably gonna need a longer term solution, and it's gonna cost us a lot of money just to do porta potties, how could we invest that in a, in a solution that's more lasting?
So I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn, but the DOLA grant allows for me to project potential COVID costs. Um, what we would be doing to try to alleviate and help the businesses. Uh, I would like to send it off, but would refitting our bathrooms, is that even say feasible to think about and, and? Put in this projected cost?
I would like to suggest that that may be a good idea, this is trustee Taylor. And you probably are talking out of turn, I'm just saying that.
Sorry.
I, I was, I was just gonna say that, I think that the challenge, Hope, would be how quickly you need that information, I don't think Chris and I have the capability to pull that together. In the next twenty-four hours, you know, so I think that's, it's gonna depend on your timeframe. Cause our other thought was that town is also applying for FEMA, and that may be an option too, so maybe we could just connect tomorrow when you're here and talk about that timeframe.
Not to jump out of turn or anything, but I just wanted to open up the public comments, is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak before we bring this back to board discussion?
Uh, hi, I'd like to say one more thing, Jessie.
Jessie Ansari, yes.
Yeah, Jessie Ansari in, in Netherland Town, um, yeah, I, I do think the porta potties are a necessity for now, but I would really like us all to, please, let's look into allocating funds or grants. Or whatever we can to reopen the bathrooms in a safe way. Um, and, and for someone other than our two-person parks team to be dealing with this, um, I think it's time for, for everyone to get creative. Um, people are not wanting to do their business in thirty porta potties, and so people are literally finding places around town. To do, to do that, so I, it, that is unsafe too, I, I really do think this is something we need to look into quite quickly, thank you.
Thank you, Jessie. Anyone else?
This is trustee Taylor, I would simply like to, uh, make sure that, uh, Laura knows I was joking when I told her she was talking out of turn.
Understood. Tanya, was that you raising your hand? I'm going to bring this back to the board. Because I think we, you know, we are, we're hearing we're all fairly closely in agreement on this that we understand that the porta potties are a non-ideal stopgap situation for this current immediate need. But I think we would also like to look at directing town staff to find, you know, to look at what it would take to retrofit the, our bathrooms, to look at what the costs would be to keep them as clean as they would need to be in the case of a pandemic and to look at that FEMA money that Miranda mentioned as an opportunity to make that happen within the next few months. So that as we get into, say, September, when this money runs out, we have a permanent solution in place for this pandemic and for whatever the future brings.
This is Trustee Coombs Ismail. Yeah, I think especially what Jonathan said, what Mayor Protem Baumhofer said about maybe, with this resolution, we also, you know, give some form of a not a four to town staff to get, to start working on how we can reopen our bathrooms safely and, you know, solve this problem in a more permanent way.
I think that sounds like the framework there for a motion to approve 2023 with a not a four, with a, with additional direction to staff for that purpose.
I would second that if you just motioned.
I was going to let you make that motion since you already said it.
Well, then I motion what Mayor Larson just said.
And I second the motion.
And we have a second.
Could you repeat that?
We are moving to approve Resolution 2020-23, which is the NDDA funding for porta potties and direct town staff to develop a plan and look at what it would take to retrofit the current bathrooms in both physical infrastructure as well as cleaning supplies or cleaning protocols to address the pandemic so that they can be reopened as soon as possible.
Okay, Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallon.
Yes.
Trustee App.
Yes.
Motion so passed. All right, moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hope. Thanks to the DDA for taking on that project. Okay, our next item on the agenda, this is listed as discussion and I believe it is a discussion item. This is something that's brought before us by SAB, I believe.
Garrett McDaniel, Sustainability Coordinator, is going to introduce this.
That's what I thought he was on here for and I was hoping that was the case. So I will just hand it over to you, Garrett. Thanks for joining us.
Great. Thanks for having me. Can you hear me okay?
We can indeed.
Great. So the purpose of this, this discussion item is to, is to discuss enforcing waste haulers to report their, the waste that is picked up in Nederland. There was a, there was a PowerPoint presentation in the packet, which clearly, I don't know if you could show that or not. Perfect, yeah. So if you go to the next, the second slide there. So you can see the yellow boxes. That's data we don't have. And so you see at the top recycle, compost, landfill, cardboard.
We don't have a lot of information for residential and commercial customers. So what this resolution would do would require waste haulers that service the town of Nederland to report annually to Boulder County's Retract System.
So if you go to the next slide. And that's, that's actually something that, that they do with every community in Boulder County, apart from Nederland. And so what this really does is it enables myself, Chris and the SAB to make informed, data-driven decisions. So this really is fundamental to developing a zero-waste strategy and to, you know, deliver effective, you know, tactics or actions to, to bring about our, our zero-waste goals. Just real, the Retract System is, is something that it's been, it's been in use for a few years. Again, it's administered by Boulder County. There's no sign up, you know, the town doesn't need to pay any membership fees. There's really no extra effort on the waste haulers. They're already doing it for all of these other communities. And in fact, you know, it, it really is an easy process. You know, based on my conversations, the waste haulers are happy to do this. So as far as the benefits of waste hauling data, as I said, we're better able to strategize to reduce material sent to landfill and increase recycling and composting. Just provides better visibility and transparency into our waste efforts. We can compare Nederland to other communities in Boulder County, which is nice. And when we're talking about our greenhouse gas emissions, having, you know, total landfill amounts really helps us determine our carbon footprint. So real quickly, that, that was the purpose of this resolution. It, it really is, it's easy for waste haulers. It's fundamental to, to what we're doing on the SAB side. So yeah, so that, that's really my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you have, you guys have.
Thank you, Garrett. Members of the Board of Trustees have questions for Garrett on this one? Tanya.
Yeah, it's more, it's more a comment. I think it's a great idea. I think having data and information is really useful for making decisions for the future. So yeah, and thanks for doing it.
All right. I'll open this up to public comments because I believe I see Laura has her hand up. Laura King.
Sorry, I don't have to have a comment on this.
Okay, I was going to say, oh, that's a holdover from a previous one I missed. All right. Does any member of the public like to speak on this matter? Okay, so I believe bringing it back to the Board of Trustees, we brought this before us as a discussion item this night, this night, tonight, with the idea of being open with the changes to this matter because it is kind of a planning item. So I would be looking for the Board of Trustees to say voice support or not for having this come back at the next agenda as an action item. Alan?
Yeah, I think it's something we really need, need to do. It's a missing piece of information if we're going to get to zero waste. And I'd love to see it come back as a consent item in the next agenda.
Okay. Eric, do you have agreement on that or disagreement?
Total agreement. Think we need to do this. To bet it's not an action item now.
Jonathan?
I would be in agreement. I'm kind of curious. I know it's our, our process to have it as a discussion item so it can get out to the community. But being that there's no cost to this and it works been done by our Sustainability Coordinator that was gotten through a grant at no cost, why we couldn't after this just have a motion to move this to an action item and put this through today so we can start collecting data right now?
I was going to say, it's sounding like, you know, we do have that ability to move things from discussion item to action item with the approval of the Board. So if we had a motion to move this discussion, resolution, I lost the number. Zero Waste for Resilience in 2023-20 to action item tonight.
So moved.
I make the motion.
I heard Eric with a motion. Do I have a second? Tanya? Are you there too?
I'll second.
Oh, Lindsay, there's a motion and a second to move this to an action item. Miranda?
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Trustee App. Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallon.
Yes.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Yes.
Okay, this is now an action item. Actually, something somebody mentioned as we were going into that motion had a prompt, one question I have for Garrett. If this is resolved and we, it takes effect or we pass it tonight, as it sounds like we will, how soon is it? Oh, oh, that's it. Okay, so they report the, they report these yearly? Is that it? So we won't get the data until January 31st anyway? Or does the data start flowing sooner than that?
That's, that's correct. They, they report this annually.
Okay. So we'll get a report on our residential and business diversions sometime next spring, winter?
It's pretty, from what I understand, it's pretty automated. So once they submit that, it's just a matter of logging in and retrieving that data. So we should have that, you know, shortly after that, you know, that date there.
All right, very good. In that case, if there's other comments, questions or a resolution to adopt 2020-20?
Alan and I move adoption of the, of the resolution.
Jonathan and I second.
Motion and second on the table.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Trustee App.
Yes.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baumhofer. Yeah? Mayor Protem Baumhofer?
Yes, sorry, mute.
Trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passed? Resolution passed?
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Garrett.
Garrett, good job.
All right, on to our second discussion item of the night, which is a very many ways a continuation of the discussion item from the previous meeting in June. Looking at Envision 2030, we had directed town staff to look at ways we can move forward on this and set a timeline. So I'm going to hand it over to town staff to let us know what they found or what they came up with.
All right, so this is Miranda. Before you is our recommendation. So we broke it into phases using kind of a traditional strategic planning process. So our recommendation is that in July, we kick it off with Envision 2030 Community Engagement Kickoff Month, where the main goal is really solicit internal and external feedback using a SWOT analysis, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, by asking these handful of open-ended questions. We did limit it to just three questions because we're not trying to overwhelm and we're just trying to use these as, as framework to guide conversations. So before you, you see all of the questions. So the way in which we plan to receive that feedback is in a couple of different ways. Our first is through an online survey, which would be made available on Jan, on July 1st. We'd also have paper surveys available that could be picked up at places like Town Hall or the library so that people had options and leave that open for about a month. We'd also look to gain the feedback during the Board of Trustees meeting in July as well as all the advisory boards and commissions. So I listed the dates that we would attend all those meetings. At our last meeting, we did discuss external organizations, specifically arts, culture and education. So we listed a series of external agencies. This is not a complete list. This is just kind of our start. And our hope was if they already have a meeting in July or August, say like their boards meeting or they're just having a regular meeting, that we would come to it and ask for some time to ask those SWOT questions. If they did not have a meeting scheduled, then we would ask to schedule one with them so we could obtain this feedback from them. Also, the, it's a big part of, you know, getting the, the feedback is through staff interviews. We also plan to dedicate some time for department heads to really ask their teams what their responses are to those SWOT questions. And then finally, ideally, if we can, the week of the 26th of July, do a community vision workshop, which is the same structure as we have previously presented to the Board where the, you know, there's just a lot of tables with information and we just have, again, that really informal conversations where the community can come to the community center or Chapita, depending on public health guidelines, and we just have those open conversations. So that's kind of our, our thought for July and August is to just focus on feedback. Then what I would do in August is I would take all the information and to, to compile it all in order to bring it back to the Board in September. The recommendation from there is in September and October, the Board and community is really tasked on working on the visions, values, guiding principles, major goals and specific objectives for Envision 2030 with some additional public charrettes to kind of vet that feedback. I'm really focused on the end of the year, November and December, on developing the action plan for Envision 2030 with the specific targets and standards of performance, our performance measures, initiatives and projects. And then do an annual evaluation. I think that's important to do ongoing assessment of our progress. And so every year, we can kind of review where we're at with Envision 2030 and then take in a corrective action if necessary. So tonight, we're just kind of looking for your feedback, you know, or nod for us to move forward or any other suggestions that you have or changes for this plan.
All right, thank you, Miranda. I for one think this is a, this is a great start for how to do it. It's particularly given the inability of our, to reach out and talk to people face to face. So thank you for putting this together. Open this up to trustees. We'll just work down the list. Alan?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good, good, good approach and I appreciate the proposal. I guess one question that I would add that I think is a key part of Envision 2020 and what I hope would be part of Envision 2030 is sustainability. I think that's a value that we share in our community and I think it's something we've made some progress on and something I hope will still continue to be a, a goal for 2030. You know, I think Chris Belter is on a good job in trying to further that goal. SAB has as well and the previous Board. So I think it's one thing I would add to those questions.
Eric?
Yeah, thanks for putting this together. It looks really good. I guess the only thing kind of missing from my perspective here is the contingency plan for the week of July 26th. Then what we would do if these community vision workshops just could not happen. And what I'm assuming is that we would take the topics of you were discussing. Last meeting, we would take these topics and sort of break them out and maybe assign moderators to have conversations with the community remotely or in other, maybe asynchronously or by other methods in order to get this feedback. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, I mean, I think that our, our thought really, you know, Karen obviously is monitoring the, the guidelines very closely. And that the goal, originally, we wanted to get this all done in July and then we realized that wasn't really realistic. So our thought is July and August. So if July 26th, it's looking like we cannot do the, the workshop, then we could look into August and, and come up with a contingency plan that either has that electronic virtual component or push that piece further out into the month of August.
And one thing we had talked about in the past, prior to, to the pandemic starting, we had scheduled Gary Sampson to be the moderator, as it were, or MC or whatever you want to call him. And I would like to reach out to him and find out his availability as well. And going through this conversation, it does seem to me that July 26th might be a little early to try to do this. But I could see if he's available and maybe get some placeholder dates from him and include the July 26th as an option as well.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the, when, now, now that I'm saying it out loud, I, in this particular proposal, I do sort of miss that idea of those kind of topical task forces that we discussed before. And I kind of think they might even be a good idea without the pandemic. And that's, I, I don't know if there, there's a way that we could work in that concept into this plan.
I think we can. I think one thing when we were really looking at, as we move from assessment to baseline though, is the consistency of feedback. And so that's kind of why we pushed this back really into town staff world just so that there was consistency in who was gathering the feedback, which is really myself and Karen. myself and Karen. Um, but I do think we could kind of explore that task force with that same idea, though, that there's consistency in, in the data collection.
That makes sense, yeah.
Jonathan Baumhofer?
Apologies, took me a while to get to the mute. Um, it's looking like a really good plan to start off with. Um, I would caution that we, uh, be lenient, I guess, with ourselves and recognize that as the situation develops, if we're able to do some of these things in a little bit more face to face, um, I'm still kind of pushing and hoping for that. Um, I find that discussions face to face tend to uh, be a lot more effective at exploring some of these issues and the uh, unique dynamics we have in Netherlands, and that it may be hard to capture that information through surveys. But considering where we are, I think this is a great start, and I really want to thank Karen and Miranda for kind of bringing this to us. Um, I guess my own, only question would be, are we going to have a, a standard way that these boards are going to look at it? Because DDA, ProSAB, SAB, all work very differently, and if we don't have some type of a standard question, and I guess almost like hand the board an outline of this is the questions you're going to answer, it's going to be maybe difficult to really get useful information out of those discussions.
So we wanted to ask the same SWOT questions of the boards and commissions, but just ask them to tailor their responses, kind of specific to the work that they do. And then anyone who wants to speak to maybe the broader scale could then do the online survey, or, or have a, a different discussion with us afterwards. But each board would be a task to answer those exact same questions with like SAB's framework in mind, or, you know, ProSAB's framework in mind.
Okay, sweet. Well, and, um, not many more discussions. This seems like a great, great framework to get us started out, and, uh, I would just kind of second what Eric had said, that if we could find a way to somewhat bring back in these, these commissions, more specifically focused at those uh, broader kind of, um, areas that we want to focus on as a community, it would be helpful. That's it. Thank you.
You, Jonathan? Uh, Julian Taylor?
So, uh, I wasn't involved in Vision twenty twenty. I wish I had been. I, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Miranda and Karen for putting this together. I think it's a very good plan. Uh, and I'd like to ramble for just a few moments. Um, as a vision statement, Vision twenty twenty was well crafted. The problem with a vision statement is that it doesn't describe an implementation. A vision statement covering ten years cannot be accompanied by an implementation because nobody can plan ten years ahead and actually do specific things. Uh, I'm kind of listening to this discussion and wondering if we couldn't couple Vision twenty thirty with a sketchy, not detailed implementation plan for year one. I'm not talking about fifty pages, I'm talking about a page or two. Wherein perhaps individual boards will step in and say, yeah, uh, we, we get this, and we see, you know, uh, item number one and number si- six in the vision, uh, look good, they look like things we can help with, and we commit to do this, uh, by the end of the year. Uh, I don't know, it just strikes me that it would be nice to have a yearly review of Vision twenty thirty coupled with a kind of an implementation plan. Something that says, uh, we're at least committed to do at least this much. And having run a number of projects like this, I think it would be very fun for each of those implementations to do what we do with a long-term engineering plan, where we have a pre-mortem and what's called a red flag review. That's kind of a cool little operation where you assess what can go wrong, and for everything you think could go wrong, you come up with a Plan B. And I have twice in my life had the pleasure of having someone throw a red flag at Sun Microsystems, and I was able to say, go to Plan B, and everything worked out great. So those are my only thoughts on this. I really like the way this is put together. I would really like it, if we could think about, i- is there a way that we can say for the last three years, we've established this implementation plan for each of those three years, and, you know, we've come within ten or twenty percent of each of those goals. Uh, that would be a really nice way to round out Vision twenty thirty on our way to Vision twenty forty, being able to say, yeah, we actually did accomplish what we intended to. Anyway, just a thought. I, I like what you've done so far, and I really appreciate it.
Trustee Taylor, I actually, so I've been studying the SWOT analysis quite a bit, and so the recommendation actually is in that specifics phase to really do that, to not only look at your ten-year goal, but to, to break it down into smaller actionable items, and then through your evaluation, you say like, okay, you know, SAB committed to a goal for that year, twenty twenty-one, and then at the end of that, did they meet that? And so that you do the kind of those micro goals to get us to the large picture. Um, so I, I didn't really outline that, but I figure as we move closer to those phases, that's what we would be digging into more.
Sure, thank you very much.
Lindsay?
Hello, um, yeah, I, so I like the idea of trying to have the same questions asked at each of the, um, advisory boards and commission meetings. Uh, I think that'll help kind of direct the conversation. Um, and in terms of collecting the responses, are, are the responses or the discussions from these separate meetings going to be compiled in a single location? Um, like, if somebody from the public wanted to go to a specific webpage and be able to see, hear all the exact comments from the DDA, BDA, ProSAB, um, you know, I'd like to consolidate things so it's easy for people to see where it's heading and what's being discussed, rather than trying to chase them down in all the different meetings and on Google Drive and, and other places. Um, would it be possible to have a, a single page created that said how some of these responses and, and information?
Yes. I think, you know, we've got those icons on the, the webpage, and right now we still have the election up, so I think we could definitely replace that with Envision twenty thirty, and it could outline the process and just be continuously updated with the feedback in real time, so people could see it shortly after a meeting.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love that. I, I think that's something that's been difficult in the past, um, when people are trying to chase down where an idea went, and who talked about it, and at what meeting and what time. And maybe by having it consolidated, will it take some of that burden off of town staff of having to constantly chase things down, um, if we had a page like this kind of set up? Um, so that's something that, that I, I personally would like to see happen. Um, and I think I think the other trustees kind of covered everything else that I, I was thinking about, so, um, that's all, all I had.
Very good. Tanya? Tanya? Just muted yourself.
Uh, I, I agree with what everybody has been saying about the action plans yearly, having it be transparent on the website, and everything like that. Um, I think, eh, since we recently were talking about fire danger, eh, to fire danger, um, I think maybe we should even be consulting with our fire departments, emergency people about what they envision um, in their field for twenty thirty-two. I don't see them on the list, but, um, want to make sure that, uh, that gets included too.
I've just added them, and, and if you, there's other, as you all are thinking and you're looking at that list, if there's other organizations as time goes on that you realize should be added that aren't captured, just let us know, and we'll make that contact with them.
All right. Thank you, Miranda, and, uh, all the town staff for the work you put on this. We're looking forward to having this kickoff here in a couple of weeks with the uh, July first release of these surveys, and, uh, I think it's up to all of us as trustees to help get the word out and get the public to weigh in on what they see Envision twenty-three looking like. Twenty-three, Vision twenty thirty.
Hey, Mayor, can I just jump in real quick and just?
Go for it, Jonathan.
A thought popped in my head when we were talking about kind of the action plan, as Julian described, and I believe that was attempted with Envision twenty twenty. Um, that is, this is actually kind of coming out of a public comment we have from Jesse Anasari, the, uh, Chair of our ProSAB Board currently, about, um, cross-communication between the boards, and how we have all of these seemingly conflicting master plans. Um, I think Julian kind of nailed it on the head when he said, it's a beautiful vision statement, and it was beautifully written. But it's a vision, and being a vision statement, there are many different interpretations of what that vision actually looks like in actuality, you know, how it manifests in the buildings that we build, and how the parks are laid out, and where exactly buildings are in those parks. Um, and from my knowledge of twenty twenty, kind of coming in after college, being a part of both Ned twenty twenty and the Pulteney twenty twenty in Vermont, that our college is doing with this small college town, I came back in, um, probably two thousand thirteen, and jumped in and started jumping in with our boards, and all of these boards had master plans or action plans. And those master plans and action plans were derived in large part from the twenty twenty visions, and then sitting down with a bunch of people and saying, how do we make this actionable? I think the failure that happened in twenty twenty was that the boards failed to meet quarterly, and they failed to communicate amongst one another's who was doing what and how they were moving forward. And I think if our advisory boards could focus more on that as we move to try to kind of refocus for Envision twenty thirty, and we can make it a habit to have quarterly meetings between all of our advisory boards and the BOT, specifically to focus on how are our action plans going, where are we in terms of Envision twenty thirty, and how is this in line with the comp plan? I think it would help everybody in town on, um, kind of on the citizen level, as well as everybody working on these boards, to really feel that we all are going in the same direction, and that there really is a very, very structured framework for making these visions we have all agreed to uh, pursue as a town in actual reality. So I, I would like to say those are great ideas, but I would also like to say that I think the intent was that for twenty twenty, and it was tried, and we have a lot to learn from um, the lessons from our advisory boards, communication, and basically the dissemination of information to those advisory boards and our citizens. So. Hopefully, that wasn't too complicated, but just wanted to speak because a lot of volunteers in the past decade have done a lot, and it was based upon action plans, and it was attempting to implement the Envision twenty twenty. That was how those advisory boards were designed and, uh, made. It was the reason they were made, so. Speak to that.
Good points, and I think, yeah, I think anything we can do to improve that communication between the Board of Trustees, the, and our advisory boards, or between the advisory boards and one another, is, is critical as we move forward. All right. Well, as I'm sure as many of you noticed, as you looked at the agenda, uh, we shifted things around tonight, so we have, uh, moved through our action and discussion and informational items, and now we are going to move into the staff reports. We moved those to the end because we had so many things that we thought, uh, members of the public would want us hear particularly or weigh in on in the action items, so we wanted to make sure those were earlier in the night. So we'll now move forward with staff reports, beginning with our town administrator, Karen.
Oh, good evening, everyone. I know you've all been participating in this conversation since six o'clock. So you've put in a good three hours, so I'm, I'm going to try not to take too much of your time. Uh, there's a lot of information in my report. The first thing, though, I do want to call out is that, uh, for staff accolades, this month, I'm recognizing Nicole Ferdinandson. She has been, uh, she's our utilities manager. She's been with the town for eight years. She's really a dedicated employee. She's got an excellent leadership style, uh, with her team, who is very effective, and she has gone beyond, above and beyond in, uh, preparing all of us for her impending maternity leave. Uh, she's due to have a baby at the end of the month, um, Calvin, and, uh, we're all really excited for her, and she's just been so professional. She is, uh, it's really going to be challenging to fill her shoes for the three months that she's out. Um, but she put together a really excellent plan, uh, giving assignments to, uh, people throughout her team, and then even outside her team, to make sure that her supervisory, financial, uh, compliance, communication, all the daily tasks that she does, as well as her project management. Um, it's all being covered. So she's just a great person. She's a bright light in our team, and I just want to recognize her and, and give her our best as she embarks on this great adventure of motherhood. As far as, uh, COVID, uh, the information I put in the packets already outdated. Things are moving so quickly. We are still in the safer at home and the vast, great outdoors, uh, phase of the state orders. This, um, really helped us understand what we could be doing as far as public and private gatherings, outdoor recreation spaces, um, uh, short-term rentals could be, uh, put into operation again, as long as they followed certain guidelines. Helped us with direction in working with our, our houses of worship, and how they can operate in a safe way. Well, what's going to be happening now is, uh, the governor came out with information about protect our neighbors, which is going to be the next phase after safer at home. And, um, what they're really looking for is to have some consistency, especially having to do with the capacity numbers, whether it's indoor or outdoor gatherings, and they are actually taking input from, uh, folks. Until tomorrow at five, I did send all of the, um, all of the board members access to links, so that if you did want to weigh in, you could. But again, they're looking at revising the indoor/outdoor event guid- guidelines. And the way it will work is a little bit differently than the other orders have worked. The way this one is proposed to work is that communities, and I believe it's countywide, would have to see if they qualify to shift into the protect our neighbors stage. And, uh, they'd have to show that their transmission of the virus, how they're treating it, and their hospi- hospi- hospitalization and, uh, equipment and what are, are available, and then how they're testing and tracing for it. So this is kind of a different approach um, from the orders that have been in the past. And I had put in the, the report that the county was going to look at doing a variance because Boulder County was getting very frustrated with, with these various capacities. Like in some incidents, you could have up to ten, some twenty-five, some fifty. It wasn't always clear. Um, and so they were going to ask for a variance so that the county, Boulder County could come up with something that was standardized across all businesses and to be more equitable. And what they decided to do is take a pause now, and they're not going forward with their request for a variance because they want to wait and see what comes out with this protect our neighbors, uh, phase, and just because that is the goal. The state actually listened to the county, our county reps who were saying to them, we really want some standardit- standardization, consistency, and equity. And so that's what they're shooting for at a state level with the protect our neighbors. So I will continue to, you know, monitor and track this and update you as new information comes in. Uh, there has been, uh, evidence that it could start for some communities as early as the last week in June. Um, but, uh, definitely looking like it could come into effect by July first. But again, it would be something that we would have to qualify for, and Netherlands, we would look to the county public health folks for direction in that. Um, and take, take our cues from them. The other thing that I did not put in the report is that the Hesse Trail Shuttle, we just learned uh, yesterday, I believe, that they are going to start operating again. Um, they're actually going to do a soft launch on June twenty-seventh. But what's really kind of cool for the town, and that is they are not going to be picking up people here in Netherlands. They heard our- They heard our complaints last year about how congested the area was around the RTD parking lot and that, uh, people who wanted to use the bus, for instance, couldn't even park. But people were kind of parking all over the town and making it difficult for the businesses. So they're only going to be doing pickups at the high school and, uh, they're going to try this out and see if it works. They're going to limit how many people can be on the shuttle at a time. Um, it's going to be limited to six people or two households per shuttle. They're going to run every 15 minutes starting at 7:00 AM and, um, they're going to be cleaning all the high-touch surface areas after every trip. So stay tuned on that one. We'll see how it goes. They're basically going to see if they can make it work. The other thing, um, that we've been communicating with you about is the, uh, CARES relief money for, uh, municipalities. And so one of the stipulations of the funding is that the county, all of the municipalities within the county and the county have to agree on how the funds will be allocated. So right now, uh, Miranda and I are participating in regular, um, conversations with the county and the other municipalities, coming to an agreement on how this money would spend, be, be, be allocated. And the way we're talking right now is a 55% split that would go directly to the county, which makes a lot of sense because the county's been the one overseeing that whole, you know, Office of Emergency Management, coming up with PPEs, uh, having the, uh, alternative care sites, providing, um, a recovery center for the homeless. So they're doing a bulk of a lot of the, uh, mitigation work for, um, for COVID and then 45% would be divided amongst the rest, I mean, the municipalities, so the towns like Ned, and it would be based on population. So we're still working out all of those details. Um, it's not going to be a whole lot of money for the town, but, uh, we are looking at, uh, what we can actually spend the money on and it would be reimbursing legal fees, for instance, that have been directly, directly related to COVID-19 and those have been substantial because of all of the ordinances and, and declarations and then, you know, um, empowering Miranda to be able to work with the businesses and, you know, our, our attorney's really been working a lot of hours helping us, uh, be able to address these ever-changing orders and being able to help our businesses open and so on and so forth. So stay tuned on that. Uh, we're hoping to have resolution by the end of the week or next week and then be able to go into the portal that is being managed by DOLA to, uh, basically opt in and it's for, uh, expenses that have taken place from, um, March 27th through the end of the year. And then I did want, want to just point out that the Forest Service has made some changes in their camping. Um, now camping at any location within the same 20-mile radius for more than four, uh, 14 days within a continuous 30-day period, um, is all that's allowed. So that's a little bit different than in the past where somebody could like, uh, camp at West Mag at, at one site and then basically move to a different campsite, um, after 14 days. That's no longer the case. They actually have to move, um, within, within the 20 miles. Anyways, I put that information in there because I, I know some of you have been, um, following that. As, as you probably heard, RTD is going to start collecting fares again and onboarding at the front of the buses starting, um, July 1st. And then I did give you an update on EDOT. So that's, that's kind of the highlights of my report.
Been doing just a couple of things, Chris. Thank you so much, Karen. Thank you, you know, I just want to again highlight, thank you for the, just keeping the flow of information going, the emails we get from you every day, forwarded ones, the new ones. That's, it's been wonderful to keep that information going to the entire Board of Trustees, so thank you.
Sure, it's my pleasure.
Uh, any board members have questions for Karen on her report? Not hearing any, we will move forward to our Town Treasurer Report. Jen, thanks for sticking with us this long.
Oh Jen, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
There we go.
Oh, sorry, headphone issues. Um, so I'll be providing the financial update through May 31st. For the general fund, revenue was under budget for all departments, um, in the general fund, but this was offset by cost savings in those departments. The exception, uh, to this was the clerks office, which had an expense of $2,000. That was over budget, uh, but this was just due to the expenditure, um, being earlier than I budgeted. It's not for unbudgeted expenses, uh, so that'll wash out through time. Uh, the sales tax revenue continues to trend higher than budgeted. Um, as of May 31st, which is through March sales, it's $30,000 over budget. So the overall change in fund balance, which is a revenue less expenses, was for negative $23,000 as compared to a budget of negative 144,000. So we're doing, um, better than budgeted. For the community center fund, as of May 31st, operating revenue was 7,000 less than budget due to the closure of the community center on March 13th. Sales tax revenue was 7,000 over budget. Expenditures were 24,000 less than the budget on, as there were cost savings in all lines. The change in fund balance was 9,000 versus a budget of negative 15. For the water fund, revenue was 2,000 under budget. Operating revenue was 10,000 under budget, which was just a timing difference of, um, the billing versus when I had it budgeted, so that will wash out. Sales tax was $5,000 over budget and interest income was 2,000 over. Expenditures were 55,000 less than the budget. Operating expenditures accounted for 44,000 of that variance. Now, they were under budget in all line items except for building maintenance costs of $2,000, um, which were over budget. Capital expenditures were $11,000 under, so the change in fund balance there was negative $68,000 versus a budget of negative 120,000. For the sewer fund, as of May 31st, revenue was 12,000 under budget. Operating revenue was 2,000 over budget. Sales tax was 5,000 over budget and other income was $1,000 over budget. PIP fees were 20,000 under budget. Um, again, that's just a timing difference. Um, I saw in June some PIP revenue came in, so that should, um, start washing itself out and be back on track. Expenditures were $3,000 under budget. Operating expenditures were 38,000 under due to cost savings in all lines. Capital improvements were $23,000 over budget, but that was just due to the final biosolids payment being paid in 2020, not 2019. Debt service was 12,000 over budget. Uh, now that we pay the final payoff, um, on the biosolids facility, we will revise the loan payment, um, schedule and we didn't use all the money that was, um, that was available for us to borrow, um, so we'll reduce that for future payments. And so the change in fund balance, which is the revenue less expenses, was negative 177,000 compared to a budget of negative 168,000. For the street fund, revenue was 2,000 over budget, um, for sales tax revenue. Expenditures were 2,000 over budget, um, but again, that was just for the piece of equipment that we purchased early in the year and, um, as we progressed through the year, that will all wash out because it was fully budgeted. The change in fund balance was 7,700 compared to a budget of 7,000. So that concludes my presentation. Unless you guys have any questions?
Thank you, Jen. Uh, anyone have any questions for the Town Treasurer? Not hearing any. We will move forward to our next report, which is from our Deputy Town Administrator/Town Clerk Miranda.
Okay, so Town Hall, some exciting updates. Um, lately we've been open just on Fridays, but starting this week, we're going to open on Wednesdays and Fridays and then, um, move to where in July we're open Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So we are starting to integrate some more hours. Um, people can come anytime between nine to five on Wednesday and Friday and then still we're available by appointment on Monday, Tuesday and Thursday. The other update is we have posted as of yesterday for a front desk administrative assistant position, um, so people can read more about that role on the website and we're looking for applications by next Friday. From a licensing standpoint, within the last 30 days, I've done 25 new and renewed business licenses. Um, liquor licensing, I kind of still wait, working on the same stuff that I have been, transfer of ownerships and six, um, renewals. Some new things since our last meeting is since the board did give me approval to do modification of premise, um, you'll see that Bucy Brews, Ned's, very nice brewing company, Trace Gringos and now Knotted Root have expanded outside their regular business footprint to allow for that outdoor dining. Uh, the Kind Castle does still plan to open in June. They are just finalizing some of that electrical work, um, so their goal is to open up by the end of the month. I attached an article that I wrote for the Mountaineer that really outlines what's happening with the food establishments around town. It's changed slightly, um, but, but in general, it kind of captures what's happening with each of those businesses. A couple other business updates is that those mask posters that I had attached to my report, um, I think either last month or the one prior, are still available and we have them for pickup if people want them. Roy Young, who's the owner of Nature Zone, also donated gloves and these plastic flyer holders, which, uh, he wanted to give to businesses, so they're here at Town Hall if a business wants to pick those up. And then the other really exciting piece is with that, um, Economic Vitality Grant that you, the board approved us to use $3,000 to buy, uh, PPE. We ordered 48 one-gallon hand sanitizer bottles that have just arrived, so I'm going to start distributing those to the businesses since that was their biggest identified need. Our recovery and resiliency team still continues to work on special events, so some cool things happening right now is Monday through Friday, we get Chapitas rented every day, there's strength, training classes in the mornings twice a week, and then there's also yoga in the evenings three times a week. And then starting next week, we're actually going to have Boulder Indoor Soccer. Typically, they hold their soccer camps at the elementary school, but they weren't able to do so this year, so we partnered with them for them to use Chapita for that, for the youth soccer camp. The DDA stopgap funding, um, where businesses are receiving an award amount of two, a little over $2,000. So far, 24 businesses have received those checks and I know Hope's coming tomorrow to sign another big chunk that we can start to distributing to the businesses who are going to use those for approved expenses like PPE, property taxes, mortgages, rent, uh, to help them through this challenging time. I also listed some board vacancies. The DDA is looking for one member and so I kind of provided some information about that position. Um, they, they did extend their original deadline just to seek applicants, so those are due on Wednesday, July 1st. And then the Sustainability Advisory Board is also looking for one member. Applications were due last week, but I didn't receive any, so we are keeping that open until received. So if you know people who would be interested in either of those boards, we ask that you encourage them to apply. And the kind of last thing is, is I have not received any core requests and, and no major website updates, although the next plan is to focus on uploading the meeting minutes for the advisory boards to make sure that those are on our website.
Thank you, Miranda. Any questions for Miranda? Not hearing, I think we will move forward with the Town Marshal Report. I don't know, is Larry John one of our call-in users?
Yep, I did make it in, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Um, okay, so I'll start off here real quick. Everything is pretty much in the report. There was a couple of, uh, things that were a little bit inaccurate, I'll correct here, but, um, anyway, just want to recognize Troy Hendricks again. I know I've been saying this kind of every month, that he's just been really powering through our evidence room and purging stuff and organizing. Um, this month, uh, we were able to purge out the majority of the narcotics that have been building up in there since about 2005. Uh, they were taken to Blackhawk where they have some form of an incinerator that they used, uh, so that was no cost to us other than just his labor and time. So things are looking really good there. Um, he also got us a, I'll call it like a drying closet, basically, uh, impromptu work rope closet where we can hang any kind of material that might be damp or bloody or something like that to dry properly instead of, uh, bagging it. And then we can remove the cloth around the outside and wash it, so it's, it's renewable and reusable. Um, so again, another good idea by him, super easy, super cheap, good savings. Um, that last line under the staff accolade that talks about never getting the street again, what that actually is or was meant to be was, uh, we have several guns that will be purged here pretty soon too and they'll go to a crusher and that's what's not going to hit the street again as opposed to, um, us turning them over to a gun store or even a police supply house where, you know, potentially they could still make it back to the street. So, uh, obviously there's no shortage of guns and if somebody wants one illegally, they can go get one, but, um, I just kind of made the decision that it's just best that, um, we don't add to that, add to that number, so to speak. Um, there may be a, a few of them that we keep in police inventory, but that would be a very few of them that we may be able to potentially use. Um, staff update, we did hire a new person. His name is, his name is Peter, uh, young man. He'll be starting with this, with us, uh, close to July 1st, I believe. It's going to be a exact start date or real close to there. So you'll see him around town. We'll get him around and meet everybody and, uh, not, not attend a BOT meeting right away, but, uh, we'll get him as soon, as soon as we can to meet everybody. Uh, one of the more important things that we got accomplished that, um, was just kind of fortuitous, I guess, was that we did a use of force policy training. Um, not that we haven't all had this, you know, over, over years, but it was just kind of an important thing to hit. Uh, and obviously with, what happened with, uh, Minneapolis, it was perfect timing, so, you know, it speaks to our use of force and then use of excessive force and the mandatory reporting on officers to report use of force against each other. And that would be, you know, whether we're working with Boulder Sheriff, uh, potentially Boulder PD, GILPA, and, you know, anything like that. It doesn't just have to be, uh, Netherland internal. Um, so that was, that was an important thing that we got done. Obviously the House Bill 217 is going to change a lot of things for us and down the road, it's, it's going to cost us money. Um, well, potentially, I guess, I, I suppose there could be some funding coming our way, um, since some of these mandates won't come into effect until 2022 and 2023, um, we could see some funding from the state. I don't know. I mean, as of yet, they haven't said that, so, um, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Any questions?
Questions? Marshall?
Marshall, this is, uh, Trustee Taylor. I'd like to say how much I appreciate your decision to destroy the guns and as you say, it is kind of a symbolic gesture, but sometimes symbols mean an awful lot. And I also appreciate the timeliness of your bringing forward the use of force policy. I believe that in our town, we are not experiencing the kinds of problems that we are seeing in the larger cities and yet it is always important to make sure that where there is the possibility of using force, we are enacting policies that help our officers to remain in control of their emotions and drive and do what they need to do without doing more than they need to do. In other words, I think we have peace officers in our town and I really appreciate your presenting this as a peace officer. Thank you.
I, I appreciate that and, I mean, that's definitely the goal we strive for. Um, you know, we are, we all are human and we, every one of us is different and every one of us has a different skill set and, um, you know, it, it is, it is easy to kind of lose your focus at times, um, and sometimes- And sometimes you just have to reset yourself and and be like, okay. Take, take a breath, think about what's going on here, refocus to reality. So, you know, it's, it's just a good refresher. Like I said, we've all had this training in the past. You know, there, for what it's worth, there is no, at least in any of the training I've had twenty years, there is no chokehold that we've ever done or or a carotid hold. So, you know, if you're, if you're choking somebody, you're fighting for your life. And if you can choke them, you can shoot them. So, you know, just kind of keep that in the back of everybody's mind that it was never something that was ever taught. If it gets to that, then then that's the level of self-defense that we're going to be in for ourselves. Reference the guns, we could sell them to a police supply house. And I had that conversation with Adamson Police Supply. But he did openly admit that if if they don't move eventually, because they only sell to law enforcement, if they don't move eventually, he does wholesale them out to other gun dealers. So I'm just like, that's not really what I, we want to do. And and we don't, you know, whatever the money that would bring in, it's just not worth the potential of being out there. So, like I said, if you're legal and you can buy a gun, then go buy a gun if you want to. But we don't need to add anymore to the, to the mix.
Marshall Johns, this is trustee Coombs Ismail. I'd just be really interested, and I'm sure the whole board would be very interested to hear about the the financial impacts or other impacts of SB two seventeen, which I think, you know, is a very problematic piece of legislation. And I'd be personally, at least, very interested to hear as soon as you know what those impacts are going to look like, what those costs are going to look like, and what kinds of funding does come your way in that regard.
Trustee Ismail, this is Karen. I just wanted to, I've already shared it with with Marshall Johns and Sergeant Fine Lovin'. But but we will be sending the Board of Trustees an analysis done by our town attorney. It kind of outlines the impacts, not not giving a dollar amount to anything, but at least giving you guys more information. And then I did just want to say that Sergeant Jen and I are working on looking for funding, sort of getting it, trying to get in front of it for things like body cameras.
Thank you.
Do you have questions for Marshall?
This is Alan. I just want to commend our police on de-escalation. They've done an outstanding job over the years that I review their reports. And I think that's an exceptional trait. And I've also been impressed with the kind of community policing, helping people out when they're in distress.
Thank you.
Great. I think we are all very lucky to have have you, have Sergeant Jen, Sergeant Officer Eric. I'm looking forward to meeting the new officer that we have coming on board. He's your wonderful asset to our community.
Thank you, all the trustees.
Moving forward, we have our Public Works Manager Report, Chris.
Thanks, Mayor. My report's in the packet. I don't have anything else to add. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have questions for Chris on his packet? All right, very good.
Can I just, I just want to say that I'm just so impressed by what the Public Works team is doing with such a small staff, but doing things like repairing Jefferson Street and the work in Chapeeta Park and just everything. I just want to say that. Thank you, Chris, to you and your team.
Yeah, thanks for bringing up that, the the fact that they, the paving of Jefferson Street, that's, that was great to see happen this month.
Thanks.
Final report is from our community center manager, Dawn. Is she on one of the call ins or not here?
No, I'm right here.
Oh, there we go. All right, call in user seven, Dawn. Welcome.
Okay, so my report is in your pocket. I'm happy to answer any questions. I want to point out, I mentioned the ionizers that I purchased for the air handler unit. And if anyone has any questions on those, please contact me. I can send you the spec sheet. They're little tiny units that are put in each one of the air handlers, and they kill viruses and bacteria and fungus and all kinds of different things. And they've been proven to work on other coronaviruses at a very high percentage rate. So those are installed in the air handler for the theater, the multipurpose room, and the gymnasium. I'm continuing to evaluate all the products that are coming out. We are leaves building, we're committed to environmentally friendly products, and we've got to wed that with what kills COVID nineteen. So I'm really looking at that. I'm so happy with the information that's come out about protect your, our neighbor because those things will help us get the timeline set to go forward. I was waiting for some consistency in those guidelines, and it's been all over the map. So we are working on what that could look like, working with the R and R team on that, trying to get everything in place and hope to have some information for you soon. On the community center, we'll, we'll continue to work with staff on that. The ballot box is open to drop off ballots. I've had quite a few calls asking about that, and it is at the community center down by the flagpole. And I think that's about all I have. It's my report's in your packet, so any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Thank you very much, Dawn, and thanks for highlighting, in fact, the ballot box is open. We have until June thirtieth to submit our ballots in the primary election. So hopefully encourage everyone to get out there and to make sure you vote this this year. Any other questions, Dawn? All right. Thank you very much, Dawn. That ends our staff reports for the evening. And we have trustee reports, and I don't know about you, but it's nine forty and it's getting a little late, so I'm going to keep mine very, very short, in part because there's not a whole lot new to report since a couple of weeks ago. I've been kind of updating more frequently. A lot of the meetings, the COVID meetings and telecon that we've been having with Congressman DeGuss and the other mayors of CD two are starting to shift to more of a bi-weekly timeframe instead of every week as people sort of just have to start pacing ourselves as this goes on longer and longer. So I actually have, I can't think of anything right now that may be the latest of the night to report. So we will move forward and Mayor Pro Tem Baumhoffer. Jonathan, there we go.
Finding the mute again. Not all that much to report. Discussions continue in DDA about pretty much just getting back on track. COVID really put a wrench in all the plans that DDA was working on. And folks are still trying to get their personal business in order and get back onto kind of connecting with the committees for public arts and wayfinding. And DDA is starting to talk parking again, really trying to figure out out of the three models that were presented to the BOT, what was that, January, maybe, of last year? Really what the DDA would like to see with all the business owners, what makes sense. And kind of starting to pick back up that whole addressing the parking in town. So that's pretty much what I have to report. Looking forward to continuing to work with DDA as they ramp back up for this summer and try to get, continue working on those projects that they were working on prior to the pandemic. That's it. Hope all's well.
Thank you, Jonathan. Trustee Apt.
I also do not have a lot of new things to report other than to say that SAB, we had a meeting with Partners in Energy, and we're looking for ways to distribute those energy efficiency kits that contain even more efficient light bulbs. And there'll be a meeting taking place by the Colorado Communities for Climate Action on Friday. I think sent you folks a weekly update on that. And we'll be having a retreat, virtual retreat for six hours. And that'll be on policy issues, which I'll bring back to the board eventually.
Thank you, Alan. Trustee Coombs Ismail.
ProSeb has adjusted its priorities a bit because we were advised by GOCO that their granting process is, has changed. And we don't really know when we're going to be able to try to resubmit that grant for the Gateway Parks Project. So we have kind of put that on the back burner for now. And we'll have a, we have a draft already of our response to the forestry MOU, which we will edit and pass hopefully through ProSeb on Thursday. We'll, we're also undergoing a kind of comprehensive update and edit to the Netherlands Trails Master Plan, which we hope to ratify soon, once we get the editing process done and some surveys out. There's the Barker Meadows Park, which is ongoing. You know, we talked about the electrical power today, as well as, you know, the multi-use Meadows Park as a whole, installation of restrooms, researching native trees, plants, pollinators, et cetera, and doing some research around interpretive signage that might go there. We're also looking at an adopta program, including adopta bench, adopta rock, adopta tree. We want to adopt it as a, adopt the adopta program as a promoted project. People have already expressed an interest in adopting trees and rocks, as well as benches, especially regarding Parker Meadows. So that should be pretty exciting. And then we're going to continue communicating with local open space and forestry projects. We're continuing to think and research ideas for parks funding and maintenance. And we're looking at adding or improving the pedestrian bridge across Middle Boulder Creek as maybe something that we take on.
All right. Thank you very much, Eric. Trustee Corvallon.
Also, not too much to report. I was talking with Stephen with, about the Community That Cares group that he has been a big part of regarding keeping teens focused and, you know, out of trouble. And I think that's going to be a great group to work with and also will be a good contributor to Envision 2030. The Forside Met and Keegan and Alex had put their recommendations for the next area that's going to be clear cut. And it's going, it's by East Mag over by Twin Sisters area. So if you live around there, that's going to be the next area to be worked on. And that's about it.
All right. Thank you very much, Tanya. Trustee Danforth.
Speaking with the theme of everybody else, I also do not have a lot to report as the DDA has not had a meeting. So that's kind of it.
All right. And last but most certainly not least, trustee Taylor.
Well, the planning commission has had a couple of meetings, and I have not been allowed to attend either of them because of a quasi judicial issue. So nothing to report from me, although we will be seeing business from them eventually, I'm sure. Next one is not restricted, so hopefully next time I'll have a report. Thank you.
All right. Well, you get to attend another meeting. Lucky you. Thank you, guys, all for for what you're doing, for attending all these meetings and for keeping up with not just the work of the town, but everything else going on in our local community and around things. So does anyone have any other business they wanted to bring up tonight?
Trustee Coombs Ismail, I did have one thing concerning the next agenda. And it kind of goes back to the public comment on non-agenda items section where Mayor Larson brought up this idea of the the name and address issue. I actually drafted a discussion item that's going to address that, as well as a number of other kind of meeting accessibility concerns. So I think that we can address that in a more comprehensive way and actually come up with a policy that works for, you know, the people of our town to participate in in our meetings through that discussion. So I just wanted to give folks a heads up that we moved it to the next agenda because this one was so full.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Eric. Does anyone else have any other business?
This is trustee Taylor. I thought I would bring this up just very quickly. The Netherlands Municipal Code, we've discussed a couple of areas where the Netherlands Municipal Code is a little ambiguous. And I just want to say that I hope our discussion regarding water and sewage rates and our intent around that has reduced some of the ambiguity and hopefully provided town staff with a little additional clarity. I'm just, I'm hoping that will work. I'm hoping that that discussion was helpful.
I I agree. I was speaking for myself. I think it was a very good discussion this evening with our work session. And now it's, it's a shame that we still have to do these via Zoom, but I think we're really getting to the meat of some issues despite not being able to sit down together and work around the table. So I think it's been a good discussion and good direction to town staff. Anyone else? If not, it is nine fifty PM. And for those of the literary bent, please go home. It is Blooms Day. We'll celebrate one of the few literary holidays on the calendar every year. And I would call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn to trustee Taylor.
We have a motion to second.
Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Apt?
Yes.
Trustee Danforth?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baumhoffer?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallon?
Yes.
Trustee Coombs Ismail?
Yes, please.
Very good. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Y'all have a lovely night.
Everybody. Thank you.
Bye, folks.
Everyone. Thanks. Good night.